Hi, I'm Cheryl Kagan, very proud to be the Senator for Gaithersburg and Rockville. Welcome to this week's edition of Kibitzing with Kagan, brief conversations with people I find fascinating. So I am a very proud graduate of Montgomery County Public Schools, K through 12, graduating as a Churchill Bulldog, 553 years ago. Our school system is a lot different than when I was there. And today, I'm presenting three candidates that I am endorsing to be on our school board. Montgomery County's Board of Education is roughly half of our county's budget. So you need to pay attention and you need to cast an informed vote. So we're going to start with having these three talented candidates each introduce themselves very, very briefly, and then we'll dive back, dive right in. So 30 seconds, Rita Montoya, running at large. Please tell us about yourself.
Thank you for having me, Senator Kagan. My name is Rita Montoya. I'm a mom of two elementary school students in third and fifth grade. I am an attorney, a former PTA president, and a former juvenile public defender.
All right, you still have more time.
Thank you. I'm running because I want to make sure that we bring more oversight to MCPS and the Board of Education so that we're enforcing our policies and spending our taxpayers' money wisely.
Great, perfect. Natalie Zimmerman, District 2, your turn.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to be here. My name is Natalie Zimmerman, and I am a current MCPS educator. I am teaching third grade at Wheaton Woods Elementary School. I absolutely love what I do, but time and time again, I've been disheartened and dismayed by what goes on at the board level, seeing how they're completely uninformed by what's going on in a classroom. And I hope to speak to policy from a position on the Board of Education.
Great job. All right, and batting cleanup, Laura Stewart.
Hello. My name's Laura Stewart. I'm a mom of two recent MCPS graduates. I have been a PTA advocate for over 10 years, both at the local, the county, and the state level. And I hope to bring that advocacy to the Board of Education and bring accountability, collaboration, and transparency along with me to the board. Thanks.
Dynamite. Man, you guys should be running for president. You all did just perfect in your timing. We're going to go around and I'm going to change up the order and everything. Briefly, Rita, starting with you again, but we'll mix it up. What do you see as the biggest problem facing our public schools right now, or MCPS in particular?
Funding. Are we spending it wisely? Do we have enough? All of these programs, class sizes, do we have enough staffing? All of that comes back to funding. So we need to make sure that we're spending the funding that we have wisely so that we can, when we do request more, that we know that it will be put into trusted hands to spend it the way that it needs to be for our students.
Natalie, your turn.
Is our, I would say the biggest issue that we're facing is our transparency deficit. The way that our board is operating, it's not in a way to communicate with the public what exactly is going on in our school system. And relating back to what Rita has said, that, so sorry.
You're good, you're good. Laura? What difference?
I, I think one of our biggest hurdles is clear communication. So you can have great programs, but if parents and students don't know about them, don't know how to access them, then it doesn't really serve the whole community. So collaboration and communication to me go hand in hand. And that includes communicating to the state delegation and also the county council.
Thank you, thank you all. Natalie, it's tough being a first-time candidate. No worries, you're great.
I'm sorry, I've been up since like 5:00 this morning to get something done for school. So I am like, I'm reaching my wall.
Well, you're going to lead us off, you're going to lead us off here. What do you think the new school boards should be working on in your first 90 days? If you were to be elected, what would your priorities be in the first 90 days? Natalie, first.
Excellent. I have two priorities that I think have some pretty simple, easy fixes. One of those is that our current substitute teachers do not have any access to our online curriculums. So that means that while we ask our educators to implement them with fidelity, we're not able to do that should an educator need to take a sick day off because we're not able to give them access. The second thing that I
Go ahead.
Okay, second thing that I want to talk about is the metrics that are being asked for currently by a lot of parents. They're asking for early warning indicators. And I can tell you that as an educator, I can click one button and I have access to those. So I'm unsure why we're not able to give the same access.
Clarify. Early warning is that my student is failing? Is that there's a public safety problem?
Ah, thank you for clarifying. This is coming from parents that are looking for these early warning indicators that might have to do with students not doing well, or that it could lead to them not doing well. It could be something like tardies and absences. It could be based on our testing metrics if they're not meeting enough standards.
Perfect. Laura?
Sure. One thing I want to work on, because I've worked on it for the past five years, is to truly embrace open data. So I want that commitment from MCPS. I think we are going in the right direction and releasing more data, but we need to actually work on a board policy to make sure it's happening with fidelity, no matter who's superintendent. And then the other is, I would like to see a, something like a rapid response team from central office. So if there is something happening at a school and they're not performing, they're an outlier, that we have a team that can go in. So like reading scores are falling below, even schools that have common demographics. We have a team that can go in and really work with that school and make improvements. So I know that would be hard to do in 90 days, but it's something I'd like to start.
Starting is good. Rita?
Thank you. Funding again. My first 90 days will be in December, January, and February, and that's prime budget season. The legislative session also starts during that time. I think that we really need to make sure that we have open channels of communication so that our local, state, and federal officials understand what our needs are here in Montgomery County, which also means going into the community, making sure that we're communicating with our staff, family, administrators, our students, to see what the needs are so that we have a clear understanding of what type of budget we need and how to secure that funding.
Great. The next question is going to be about diversity. Montgomery County's public school students are increasingly diverse in all ways. Laura, how do you think we should prioritize? Which sort of issues and items and actions should we be taking to make sure we're serving all of our students and all of our communities?
Well, first of all, I would like to see, to make sure everyone feels safe and wanted in their schools and welcome. I would like to see assessments done at every school on school climate. And when I say school climate, I don't mean temperature, but I mean how they actually feel in school. And also safety. So safety and climate, to me, go hand in hand. So that's one thing. And then also making sure we have full wraparound services. Taking advantage of our community schools, which came from the blueprint. I want to make sure we're doing that with fidelity because I'm not sure if we are. So I would like to dig into that.
Okay, Rita, you're next.
Well, academically, which is the primary focus of our schools. It's why parents like I send myself, my kids to school so they can learn. We need to make sure that our class sizes are smaller. They're too big. We're setting our educators up to fail, our students up to fail. They simply cannot manage that many kids. My oldest has 28 kids in his class this year. It's too many. That obviously requires more funding and more space and more teachers. But we also need to make sure that our kids are showing up ready to learn. And that means collaborating more with our community partners, with our county officials, and again, state officials, to make sure that we have the services in place so that our students who need mental health treatment, so that our families who are food insecure or need housing assistance, so that all of those supports are in place so that when our kids show up in the morning at our MCPS schools, they're ready to learn.
All right, Natalie, wrap this up.
I want to echo that I believe that all of our students need to feel safe and welcome at their schools, that that is our first priority, that we have to meet their Maslow needs before we can start doing Bloom's taxonomy, right?
Define what, define what Maslow means are, please.
Sure, yeah. So some of those Maslow needs are things like making sure that they're fed, making sure that they feel physically safe, making sure that they feel emotionally safe. All of those things need to happen before students are available for learning. After that, I really need, think that we need to redo and overhaul our educator training. As someone that's done the educator training, I can tell you that a lot of it is just click boxes, and it's meant to just check off a task. It's not meant to actually create change. It's not meant for us to interact. It's not meant for us to question any of our own personal biases. And I think that we need to be looking at that further and making sure that we can actually use our training instead of just making it something else that we kind of require and that we check off. Similarly, in our curriculums, I can tell you that our brand-new reading curriculum, I was reading it the other day with my students and I came across a racial slur, and it was not addressed in any way in the top, in the curriculum.
Okay, let's move on. Related, unrelated, what is it that we can be doing on bullying? And first up is going to be Rita.
Thanks, yeah, that's a big problem. My kids are eight and 10. I hear about it all the time. There's a level of unkindness going on. So I definitely think we need to take kind of an all-school, but school-by-school approach. We can't use these cookie cutter things where we think something's going to work for the entire system. All schools are different. Each student population is different. I do think there are some models that we can use, though. We have some schools who have no place for hate programs. We have peace, peace school programs, which is something new from Jenny Stefanik, who I met with earlier today.
My constituent and friends.
Yes, yes, and I'm hoping to connect her with my school to see if they would like to work in that program. So I think we have these really novel ideas, and when we start at our youngest learners, right? Where we lay those foundations so that they go on to know that we can treat people with kindness and they kind of carry that on as they go forward. It would be a great approach.
Great. Laura, what would you add?
Sure, I mentioned those assessments. I think that's important because I talk to people that are surprised when their kid starts talking about bullying, like they had no idea what was happening in the school. So a lot of this is part of the culture of a school that gets passed on as kids move up through the system. So we really need to stop that cycle, but we need to know what is actually happening in the school. So we need to talk, maybe even small group meetings, and then capture all of that and then come up with a clear action plan to make it better because it's not just good enough saying, oh, yeah, there's bullying. We actually need steps.
Okay, Natalie, what sort of steps?
I, yeah, I first want to echo the teaching piece. I think that's a wonderful way to educate our students. Well, when we come to those next steps, the bullying form that we have in MCPS, not every parent knows where it is, not every parent knows that they can ask for it, not every parent knows where to find it online. If I'm not mistaken, I don't think it's available in every language either, which creates other barriers for our families. I want to eliminate those barriers, make sure that families can get what they need to be able to report bullying. After bullying is reported, there needs to be a way to track how, what was done with the form. And after that, we need to be able to aggregate that data and be able to report back on what we're doing and what we're seeing when it comes to bullying.
Great. All right, Natalie, we're starting with you on the next one. And you just referenced language access, which is an issue I've worked on a lot. My district, Gaithersburg and Rockville, are two of the most linguistically diverse cities in the nation. So what are we, what can we do better in including our non-native English speakers?
I am certified to teach English Language Development, which is the program that we use to educate our multilingual learners. And one of the things that I notice is that our students are often getting the right support. You know, their educators are trained well, that they want to give them the right support. But where we're lacking is making sure that that support can follow them home with the materials we're sending them home with. For example, I heard the other evening about materials being sent home with students in multiple languages from the math curriculum. I've requested those materials and I've been denied them to be able to send them home with my students. There is, there isn't a formal process to be able to ask for some of these materials because our parents want to help their students at home. Our families want to be involved. And we are setting up these continuous structural barriers that we're not able to help them. So I think that we absolutely need to be listening to our educators as they're trying to work with these families and send them home. We also need to be listening to our families. What do they need? How can we involve our community schools' systems that we already have and create greater access to our materials?
Rita?
I think that one thing we can do is help parents to connect. When I was PTA president and on the boards when I was there at another school, we want our parents to be involved who speak all different languages. But we don't necessarily have the tools or the money to secure those tools. We can't, we don't get to access some of the systems that MCPS has for translation and things. We try to use Google Translate, but it's not always accurate. And sometimes we can't even check it if one of us doesn't speak the language we're trying to translate into. That really excludes a lot of families from being involved in advocacy and events and knowing even what's going on. Second, though, I think that we also need to make sure that especially our families who are seeking special education services, whether those are 504s or IEPs or just information.
504s and IEPs translated.
Individual education plans, 504 plans are a type of, it's not an individual education plan legally, but it's a type of accommodation plan. And those are very important to get those services. You have to understand the laws, the rules, the processes, and also the conversations that are happening, including the kind of industry jargon, the vocabulary that you might not know. And that can all feel very intimidating, and a lot of families don't have access to advocates or lawyers to help them with that, let alone to have these conversations in their own language outside of the school system space, so.
Okay, Laura, wrap this up on this one.
Sure. We could do a better job recruiting more teachers with, that know these diverse languages that we have. For instance, more people in the front office that can speak different languages. So we should really work on
Amen, amen.
So it's more welcoming. So let's work on that. And then also, it's really important that we're teaching math in multiple languages as well as English because the math problem might just be really a language problem and not a math problem. And so we need to think about how to balance that as we're moving kids in and as they're acquiring English language. And I think those, those are two good ideas. So what they said, I just want to say, check, 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 yes.
Good. Laura, we're going to continue with you and talk about gun violence. What should, what should the county be doing? And what do you think about school resource officers? How they're being deployed and whether they're, they're being used in the right way?
Well, now, what we call, we call them CEOs, which is Community Engagement Officers instead of School Resource Officers. I am, I want to look at that model more closely. I, I like the idea of having the CEOs communicate well with administration, but not necessarily just walking the halls of the schools. I don't know if that's even the best use of their time. So I, I am open to having those conversations. And then, as, I think you asked another question, and I'm sorry, I got
Gun violence in general.
Gun violence, okay. We really need to get the information to parents about safe storage. That was something that was passed in Annapolis.
I'm sorry, who sponsored that bill again? Oh, yeah, that would be me and Delegate Jared Solomon.
And yes, I think you remember that I testified it for the statewide PTAs. And I really want to see that information getting to parents in a better way. So I'm not, we need to work on that, so.
Natalie, you're up next.
Um, I want to talk about, first, that the Community Engagement Officer Program is pretty unique to MCPS, that we don't have a lot of good data on this anyway, that we need to be looking at what data we actually have. Is it working? Is it not? We need to examine our own program and determine where we're going to go from there next. I do want to also speak to some realities of the classroom when it comes to gun violence. We have to do drills for this. And part of it is that, yes, it can be traumatizing. I know plenty of teachers that keep lollipops in their classrooms because then if the kids have something in their mouth, they stay quiet. I also can tell you that my classroom currently doesn't have a working lock. And that is horrifying to think about. These, and this comes back to a funding issue. Where's the funding to fix these little things, right? Where's the funding to put this into place? So there, yes, there are these greater issues and bigger policy things, but we also need to think about the realities in the day-to-day.
Okay, Rita, wrap this up.
Thanks, yeah, I think we really need to start drawing some bright red lines here. We can call them CEOs, we can call them SROs. What we're talking about is where and when do law enforcement belong in relation to our schools? They are in the schools now. They have an office inside of the schools. My understanding is that they engage with the kids like at lunchtimes and things like that, which I think is great because we do need to build community, right? We want our law enforcement officers to not have biases about our children, especially, especially our black and brown children. And we want our black and brown children and all of our students to understand that law enforcement can be helpful to them in certain situations. But we need to be clear about what those are, what those roles are, who's coming into our schools, looking into their backgrounds and things like that. But what, you know, I talked to a lot of families, and when it comes to things like guns, drug sales, other weapons, and then of course, mass-type incidents, they absolutely want police in there. And some of them don't even realize that the police were ever really completely taken out or that they're called something else. So I do think that there is, you know, yes, I was a former public defender. I'm very aware of the school-to-prison pipeline, but it's not quite as simple as people make it sound. And we also need to look at our local data and not just adopt sometimes things that are happening nationally, which we should be concerned and aware about, absolutely. But we also want to make sure we know what's going on in our own schools.
Okay. Rita, staying with you. We talked about bullying, but let's talk about the uptick in hate and violence that are targeted. So antisemitism, racism, homophobia, Islamophobia. All of the anti-Asian violence, there's too much of it. How should we be dealing with it in our schools?
Right, in Montgomery County, Montgomery County Public Schools, we generally refer to it as hate bias. So sometimes you'll see things about hate bias incidents or hate bias reporting, hate bias forms, processes. There's a new tiered process this year, which I think, I, I like the tiered process in the sense that we don't want to be kind of over-correcting or, or things like that for our children. They are just children, that they're, they are learning, and there are different, definitely different intensities of incidents. I do have concerns because we have different people deciding whether an incident belongs in which tier at different schools and how's that going to work out? And we'll have to see. But irrespective of all of that, we definitely have an issue. We saw just leading up to school with antisemitism. One, it's education. We're not being explicit with our kids. I explicitly tell my children, this is not allowed, and this is why. Do you know why that's so harmful? This is why that's harmful. They're children. You can't beat around the bush. You can't think they're going to understand or infer, just no. You have to be very explicit, and I feel like we're not doing that. We could also use more staff training, and it's not enough to do it every other year. It's something that needs to be done every single year.
Thank you. Natalie?
I want to continue with the staff training that Rita was just speaking to. One thing that I heard from an educator after last year, the October 7th attacks, that she came to school and said to her administrators, I'm worried that we're going to see an uptick in antisemitism, and I'm worried that we're going to see it amongst our students. And her administrator deeply cared and said, but how am I, how am I going to recognize it? And what does it look like? And part of that is that our staff at the top, right, our, our administrators and our educators, that they're not being given training. And it's not that we don't care, it's that we don't want to help our students, but that we need to be given meaningful training to do that. I want to speak to, the Board of Education itself has never chosen to undergo any sort of antisemitism training. And I think that that's another problem. There are plenty of other types of hate that I want to make sure that we are addressing as well. And even the board choosing to take that first step and go through those trainings and listen.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, we need to definitely work with community partners. I don't think MCPS is necessarily the expert on this subject. So community partners like J D R C to come in.
What's the acronym?
I'm sorry.
Did you say J C R C, the Jewish Community Relations Council?
Yes, thank you. And so I would love to see them partner with the trainers to make sure we're doing a good job training and reviewing that training. Also checking back with teachers to say, what did you think about the training? Right, to, because sometimes we put something out there and just assume it's working when it's not. And it just does become a check, checking a box. And then also, we need to, as far as hate bias goes, we need to make sure that we're, again, doing that assessment.
Okay. Natalie, you're kicking off on this one. There's been a lot of conversations about cell phones in schools. What do you think the answer is for Montgomery County Public Schools? Briefly, that's hard, I know.
You know, that I agree, that can be hard. I think that a lot of people want to draw a line and make it, yes, allowed, no, not allowed. But there is more to it. And a student eloquently brought up that, you know, we as adults, right? Adults have to make choices about what we do with our cell phones. And that as we are educating kids, that where are we putting that into our educational spectrum on here, right? That I, as the grown-up, can't be on my phone all day. So when have I learned that skill? And when are we doing the same with our students? I do think that, especially in the elementary, right? Not allowed, not appropriate. I've seen some middle schools adopt some really interesting ideas where kids can have it for five minutes between passing period after lunch. I've seen some choose to go completely, completely without, some with different color coding systems outside of doors. I do think MCPS needs to decide on a policy greater throughout the system, but I think that there is more gray area between yes and no. I want to hear from our educators what they think. I want to hear from our students. I want to hear from parents.
Perfect. All right, Laura, briefly.
Sure. I think we need to think about age appropriateness. So just from what I've seen, and then also, we need to check in with other systems, see how it's working. But for instance, middle school, I, I'm more inclined to say it should be away all day and maybe in their locker. And then in high school, and in elementary, the same, away all day. But in high school, maybe that's when we need to start giving a little bit more freedom, like at lunchtime, because there are open lunches where kids study or they're doing Quizlets. My kids studied using Quizlets. And let's look at the ages and the stages and talk through that. So, but they should not be out during instruction unless it's actually a part of the instruction, which I've seen like in a physics class, they actually use it as a measuring tool. So I'd like to talk to teachers, too.
Okay, Rita?
Thanks. In my elementary school, there, there's no reason for the kids to have them. Middle school, quite frankly, as well, those kids are 11, 12, 13 years old. I have one ready to go to middle school. I'm not sure that they have the impulse control to really handle that. And quite frankly, middle school, as rough as it is, we don't need to add an additional layer. I do agree that, you know, we're teaching our kids these different skills. And high school, you know, part of it is learning how to manage your own time, your own distractions and things like that. So it's challenging, you know, I hear of the students when they're saying, well, how are we supposed to learn that if we don't have it? And also, they have it outside of school. On the other hand, I'm hearing some good things about how the kids are talking to each other at lunch now and engaging, which is really healthy behavior, north, normal behavior that we should have.
Is that allowed?
So, right, exactly.
Having conversations?
Exactly. And so I do get concerned about that. I'm also, you know, reading The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt, which makes a lot of good points in terms of with data to back it up about the ways that not, you know, the cell phones and social media and whatnot have really impacted our kids. I don't think it's the end-all, be-all, of course. But, so I definitely think middle school and elementary school, there's no reason for it. In high school, you know, maybe we gradually go into it by grades or something like that. But I think we also need to give our teachers something that's reasonable. If while we're telling them is, we'll just tell the students to put it away. Well, we all know there's going to be some students who don't do that. And so are we putting our teachers in a challenging position? That's something we need to consider.
Okay. I'm going to do one more question to all three of you. And then I'm doing something weird that I'm coming up with on the fly here. Recruitment and retention of teachers, critically important. My wonderful sister just retired and she, she was counting the days towards the end. How do we keep our teachers happy and keep the good ones in the classrooms? And Laura, you're first.
Well, first, I would like to ask them. We need that feedback, so I'm not the, I'm not the expert on what they need, they need to tell me. So I would like to have that conversation first.
Good. Rita?
Thanks. We need to remember that MCPS is not just a school for our kids, it's also a workplace.
Yes.
We need to make sure that it has the conditions that people would want to be at. This could be lower class sizes. You know, at some point, even more pay is not enough because you just have so much work and you're not able to meet the standards that you know and want to do that. And as a public defender, I felt that we had too much work and it didn't matter. And so you go home feeling really bad because you're not serving the people that you care about so much. And then that really contributes to people's morale and whether they want to be there. So I think that, you know, when we talk about practical things, lowering class sizes, I think, could make a big difference.
Okay, Natalie, you're the one doing it now. Tell us what the magic wand is, what's the answer?
Yeah, I want to speak to the workload being completely untenable. We know that this past year, class sizes went up by one student. And while And while that to someone else, they might think, oh, that's just one student. Well, what that really means is that we can cut educator positions. Because now our class sizes will be much greater than what they were before. So that's adding to the workload. But beyond that, there are other things that really aren't necessary for us to do. I'm still signing it every day on paper that I'm coming to work. Um, that makes no sense. It's just another thing on my to-do list every morning. Um, there are other problems that come up like, uh, our copy machines, our old copy machines that were refurbished and this is across the district. So every other day I can tell you, I am pulling that copy machine out and fixing it. Right? There are all these little things that add up and it creates this completely untenable workload for our educators.
Well, bless you for what you do. Um, here's what I'm going to do now. I'm going to throw out three different issues. Each of you will speak to one of them. And first come, first serve, uh, and no repeats. Rita, you get first choice here. Uh, the three topics are the reading gap, virtual academy and artificial intelligence. Three easy softballs here. Rita.
I'll speak artificial intelligence.
Okay.
Um, you know, this is obviously a new technology, right? AI. Uh, we see it, you can Google something, chat GPT and all these things pop up. But, but I think that, you know, as an attorney, I get really concerned because even as for our children, they need to learn due diligence. So due diligence means looking into things, right? Asking questions, asking for more information. And so I get concerned when things pop up and they seem very formal, very absolute. Um, but that's part of educating our kids about digital media and, uh, digital literacy. Um, we also need to make sure that they understand that's also potentially plagiarizing, right? So when you're writing things, you shouldn't just be copying and pasting. Um, and this is where we learn, we teach our kids that. So to give them a little grace to learn so that they're ready to go.
Dynamite. Thank you. Laura, you're next. Which one are you taking?
Look, I need a repeat because.
Okay, the three that I had offered were AI, which has been taken, artificial intelligence, reading gap or virtual academy.
Okay, virtual academy. Um, the way we treated virtual academy families and students was unacceptable. Cause, uh, it came up in the budget and at first they said, no, we, we, we can't have it. And they said, yes, we're going to save it. And then at the end of the process in May, they said, oh, never mind, we can't, we're taking it away. And that's not really appropriate for families that need to plan where their kids are going to go to school, um, the next year. And also, um, you know, Virginia has had a virtual academy for many years. And, uh, this is something I would like to talk to state legislators about to see if we could come up with a statewide program because really it's virtual. So it doesn't need to be in our county necessarily.
Okay, Natalie, wrap this up.
Great. Um, I'm glad reading gap was left for me. That's the one I wanted most. What luck for me tonight. So, um, as the educator here, I'm actually, um, feeling great talking about this reading gap, um, because we have recently switched to, um, a more science of reading based approach. If anyone wants to get really nerdy about the science of reading, I would be happy to explain it, but I don't think we have enough time for that. Um, the science of reading essentially is a more systematic approach to teaching reading. And our students have not had, um, access to this. They've had access to it in small doses, but they haven't had access to this as their entire curriculum until this year. And we have had evidence for many years that this is the best way to be teaching our students. So now that we have moved to the science of reading approach, um, I do believe that we're going to see our data increase and get better. But I also think that we're going to need to give our students some time to learn this new approach. I also want to speak to the time in teaching this approach. Um, I am given twenty-five minutes per day where I can, um, enrich my students that are ready for more and where I can support my students that haven't completed all of the learning for third grade yet. And that's, that's it. That's all the time I get. Our educators need more time to be able to fill those gaps and help their students. And to be able to help our other students that are ready for more and enrich them.
Okay, uh, for all of you again, briefly, two sentences. We have a new superintendent. Laura, you kick us off. Two sentences. How's he doing so far?
Uh, I think he has a great start. And I'm looking forward to continuing, um, being more transparent and communicative.
All right, Natalie.
He has visited my classroom and I look forward to, uh, future classroom visits with him.
Love it. Rita.
He has great energy and I can see some progress in the culture of MCPS from top to bottom.
Terrific. All right. You guys are rules people with your two sentences. I expected long, like, you know, semi colons. So good job. It's time for the fast five and I'm going to be even like tougher, tougher. Um, we're going to go super fast around. Ready? Um, starting with Natalie, who was your favorite teacher when you were growing up? Say the name and what the subject was. Go.
Mrs. Miller, second grade.
Okay, uh, Rita.
Mrs. Fernandez was my Head Start preschool teacher.
Laura?
Mr. Holmes, geometry.
Excellent. What was your favorite subject growing up? Um, uh, Natalie?
Social studies.
Uh, Laura?
Music. I was a band geek.
Okay, Rita.
English and literature.
Okay, uh, Rita, favorite flavor ice cream?
Vanilla.
Oh, and I'm supporting you? Okay, go ahead. Uh, Natalie.
Moose tracks.
There you go. There's something. Laura?
Butter bacon.
Okay, um, question number four. I'm a word nerd and a grammar geek and I own both. What is your biggest pet peeve on grammar, grammar? Uh, Laura?
Uh, I guess the comma.
Got it.
When, uh, the Oxford comma.
For it or against it?
I'm for it.
Yes, good answer. That's the right answer. Uh, Natalie?
Uh, I am also deeply committed to the Oxford comma.
You guys are totally doing the right thing. Rita.
Uh, when people use an acronym in a written document without first saying what the full word is.
Love that. And the last question. Rita Montoya, Laura Stewart, Natalie Zimmerman, candidates for our Board of Education. What is your hidden secret superpower? What is a skill or talent you have, something you're really good at, that most folks can't do? So we'll go in the opposite order of the way we started here. So Laura, you go first.
Radical empathy.
Okay, Natalie.
Uh, I actually was in a folk band for five years. I used to tour the country playing music and I have perfect pitch.
I love that. Rita.
I can find a point of connection with virtually anyone, even people that I disagree with or who sometimes may be off putting to others.
You guys are awesome. Uh, I'm just going to close by saying disregard where it says district. Because all Montgomery County residents vote for all people on the school board. It just makes sure that we have geographic diversity and that our school board comes from different part of the county. So that's why you need to be paying attention to all three of these races. I'm going to say it again. This school board, our school board controls about half of Montgomery County's budget. It matters who's in charge. It matters what their values are. It matters what their experience is. It matters what kind of ice cream they like. Kind of, not really. Um, so, uh, please make sure you vote. Vote all the way down the ballot. Vote for school board. And one other thing that these folks have in common, in addition to being interviewed and endorsed by me, is that they have all been endorsed by our public school teachers. Montgomery County Education Association has endorsed these three talented leaders. So I hope you will join me in voting for Rita Montoya, Laura Stewart and Natalie Zimmerman. Thank you so much for watching. Thank you all for being candidates and thank you for taking time to kibitz. Take care. See you soon.